My activity report, fairly brief. Attended a couple of city-related events, Night to Unite, which was well-attended. Another nice evening, a good job from the all-involved there. Attended the fly-in on yesterday and another successful event after not having one for a couple of years. So we'll see how that goes, maybe do some, start some planning for one next year. And that is my report. I'm bringing nothing to the table other than myself.
Councilmember LeBeau?
Yeah, I was also at the Night to Unite, and like you said, it was a great turnout. It was a fun evening. Then we also had a Park and Tree Board meeting, and the new playground equipment out at Veterans Park is in process, and hopefully this week will be open to the public. So, that's it.
Councilmember Hertzberg?
I did the night out in the park. Good hot dogs, well-attended. Drove by the fly-in and I had Public Works.
Thanks for driving by. I was wondering who that was waving. All right, Councilmember Rinkie?
I had, we had a planning meeting and then wasn't able to make the Night to Unite, but I did make the last few minutes of the fly-in out there. Looked like what remained when I made it, was a good show.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Gilmore?
Park and Tree and the airport fly-in.
Cool, all right, thank you. We have no department head reports, so we'll move on to the consent agenda, which are the minutes from page one of a handful of regular and special city council meetings, joint planning board, planning board, Park and Tree, and Special Park and Tree, and vouchers of our update totaling $748,983.17, and the requests from the police department for the EVOC training coming up for Officer Jerome. That's in sometime here. It's needed, so to pre-approve that in September. All right, thank you. Chief?
I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by LeBeau, seconded by Rinkie to approve the consent agenda, discussion?
I have a question on the EVOC training. What, how much is the registration?
So Jerome's doing what's called a hybrid, is what he's signed up for. When I just went through, it was about $260. He's going to be using their car, so the cost is up just a little bit more than that. But we did work into our agreement with the school district, the cost of training. So we should be more than covered when it comes to, but I want to say it's probably going to be in that, somewhere in that three to four range on the registration because of the squad car. Unfortunately, they don't publish their prices, so I can see them, so it's hard to know exactly.
Why is he not using our squad?
Just for the wear and tear on the cars. I could send him with one of ours, but they do get beat on quite a bit, in fact, they make ours last.
Okay, this is the consent agenda, so it really shouldn't have much discussion, but do you want pulled from?
No, I'm fine. I just had a question about that round.
Okay. All in favor, I?
I.
Opposed? None? Carried? All right. And the first item is the Safe-A-Sure contract coming up for renewal again, with a little bit of an increase there. Ron?
Okay, Safe-A-Sure, we've been with them, it's got to be close to 15 years now. As you can see, the fee is $5,287, up $192. That's just over 3%. But they do take care of all our written programs, trainings, et cetera, from the aware, the employee rights and all, lockout, tag-out, respiratory, bloodborne, hearing, confined space. They've done a good job. I guess if we wouldn't have them, we'd have to send somebody to get trained, to train the trainer type of thing, and that would just, it would take up a lot, a lot more time. I think this is well worth it, and it was, just went through the Public Works Committee, and they did recommend approval.
Are there other companies that offer this kind of service?
We did check a few years ago. The MMU does it, and I believe their fee was right around $10,000 at the time. But this year, no, I have not looked.
I'll move to approve the Safe-A-Sure contract agreement and invoicing about $5,287.
Second. Motion by Rinkie, seconded by Hertzberg to approve the Safe-A-Sure contract agreement and invoicing amount of $5,287. Discussion? All in favor, I?
I.
Opposed? None? And to that carried. And then the annual agreement here with the CentraCare Physical Services Contract for the Fire Department. Renee?
This is our annual renewal. You'll see quite a bit of changes, but it really boils down to an increase across the board was approximately $25. The firefighters went in on the August 5th and 6th and had their physicals with, under the new rate schedule, and their next physicals will be in 2021.
I thought $25 per person?
Yes.
For firefighter.
I was just curious if there was a reason that this didn't come in July before they had their physicals?
That was an oversight on my part.
I'll make a motion to approve the contract for firefighter physicals between the City of Panesville and CentraCare Health. Panesville effective July 1, 2019.
I'll second.
Motion by Gilmore, seconded by LeBeau to approve the contract for firefighter physicals between the City of Panesville and CentraCare Health. Panesville effective July 1, 2019. Discussion? All in favor, I?
I.
Opposed? None? And to that carried. And SmartNet, Ron Lovis verbal report about the changes here for our networking system, for all your little gadgets there.
All right, thank you. Yes, GPS referencing station, what that does, it brings the, receives a signal, and basically it corrects it down to five millimeters, and then it would actually send it back out via, or you could access it via the internet or using a cellphone. What's actually going to be proposed out there, there's virtually an antenna, a mast. We would supply them with power and their little receiving station, which, there's a picture, I believe it's on page 25. It's, the total length of the mast is eight feet, so, and for compensation for hosting one of these, it would be $1,250. If we would want to give them access to our internet out there, it would be $1,500. I guess between Renee and myself, we did not feel comfortable giving them access to our internet, so we would just supply them with power, and their total power consumption for annually would be about 1,500, or 15 kilowatts, which is very minimal for the year. This did go through the Public Works, and they recommended approval. Bill Spooner did draft up the proposal on that, or the addendum, and so Bill, I don't know if you've got anything to add on that, but the first time it went to Public Works, they sent it back, because there was some issues or questions on the liability on it, and I think that's all been corrected, so they felt pretty comfortable approving it.
That's $1,250 annually, correct?
Annually, yes.
I'll make the motion to approve the SmartNet North American Reference Network Reference Station Host Agreement between the City of Panesville and...
Let's call it LIKA.
LIKA Geometric System Incorporated.
Second.
Motion by Hertzberg, seconded by Rinkie to approve the SmartNet North American Reference Network Reference Station Host Agreement between the City of Panesville and LIKA Geo Systems Inc. Discussion? All in favor, I?
I.
Opposed? None? And to that carried. And we have coming for us a variance request in regards to redoing a garage, raising it up, putting a new pad underneath, adding onto the garage that's going to exceed the coverage area. Renee, do you want to give us any more of an update on that? That's on 321 Lake Avenue.
Sure. This is on the property on Lake Avenue, which was previously owned by Habitat for Humanity. About 15 years ago, it had a house on it and a garage. It's the third lot behind, second lot behind Casey's. It has test wells on it right now. The house burned down, the garage is the original garage. There is a curb cut to access the property, and he would like to, he does not want to build a home on the lot, just a garage. He wants to raise the garage up, put a new slab under it, use the entire structure of the garage that's there, but add onto it. And this has went to the planning board. According to our ordinance, we don't allow sheds without a primary structure. The planning board reviewed it, and they feel that this is a unique situation due to the house burning down 15 years ago. It was a conforming lot, and once the house burnt down, it's now non-conforming because it just remains the garage. He has no plans to rebuild the house while he owns the property, just to use it for storage. Bill, do you have anything to add?
Well, it would be my sort of usual commentary on variances.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, the standard for variance is it creates undue hardship, which means the lot can't be put to reasonable use without the granting of a variance. That's, that's basically the standard for variance in Minnesota. This lot has a current use, it has a smaller, older garage, and it wouldn't require a variance to have a garage of the same size, but what, what required, what kicks in the requirement for a variance is expanding the height and the area of the garage. So technically, I mean, I understand. I, I mean, I, I know the people that have applied for the variance, I know they'll, they'll make it look nice, it'll be a good, you know, it'll be a good thing, but it doesn't really meet the standards for a variance. So that's, I mean, legally, I would say no, we shouldn't grant a variance under these circumstances.
So there's no, like, structural reason that they're applying for this?
No, they just need to, they're going to use what's there, they just need to expand it a little bit bigger to be able to house their boat.
Okay.
If they were to tear it down and build it, no, it was just like that, they wouldn't have to do anything. It's only because they're changing the size.
So it's not like there's some issue with the concrete slab that they're tearing up? Like, all that stuff is fine?
He said that the building itself has sunk below the concrete slab, so he can't just raise it up, the slab under there is no good. Jennifer, did you have?
But he could do, he could do all of that without expanding the size of it.
Right.
I mean, that's, that's, that's where the, where the, kind of the line would be on the replacement of a pre-existing non-conforming use would be, it became a non-conforming use when the house burnt down. And so, you know, I mean, I'm, I know we've granted a lot of variances where I've said these same things. I'm not, you know, I'm not getting on my high horse about it, but if you ask me, that's the standard, and, and that's what I would, would say, is that legally you shouldn't.
I would, I would say rebuilding it probably adds value to the lot.
Certainly does.
For him and the next guy?
Certainly does, but, you know, the whole point of having an R1 neighborhood is to encourage the construction of homes. And, and as part of our ordinance in residential neighborhoods, we do not allow a shed without a hole. And so we're, we're allowing something that our zoning ordinance doesn't allow. Now, it's there in its current size and shape because of a fire, it's what was left, and I get that, but to make it bigger, seems like a stretch under our, under our zoning ordinance, but...
Do they own a neighboring property?
No.
And there's no alleyway behind this?
That I don't.
No.
No, there is a driveway.
There's another shed right on the other side of it, on their lot, but there is no entrance anywhere other than off Lake Avenue.
So where do they enter the garage?
Over here on Lake Avenue, and then they drive back. There's another shed on the lot right next to it, right here.
Is that a shared driveway?
I think it's shared by you, it's what Richard was telling us, but they, he said they own it, it's on his property, but the, the neighbors use it, sort of as their own.
And this is the shed.
And I think the mindset of the planning council was also that, you know, like Neil was saying, it's going to increase the property values, it's going to make the neighborhood look better. If we deny it, it's going to continue to be sort of blighted over there.
I'm going to make the motion to approve variance determination for Richard and Kathleen Mueller because of the recommendation and the increased valuation.
I'll second with a question on a point of clarification, or a point of order.
Yes, your point.
Renee, I thought that coming out of the planning commission, this needed to be set for public hearing first. Is my memory just failing me, or?
I was thinking the same thing.
Yes, that's Meyer. Please set a public hearing in half.
I take my motion back. It says it has to go to public hearing.
So Neil, your motion would be to set?
My motion would be to set a public hearing.
Set the public hearing for September 9.
That's the motion.
That was Meyer.
I'll second that motion.
What is the motion for now?
Set the public hearing for September 9.
And, and okay, I had not read the motion or repeated the motion, so you can withdraw. Who made the motion for the public hearing?
Neil did.
Right, and I restated it to make the public hearing.
And a second?
My second.
LeBeau, okay.
Because I told him to be at the September 9 meeting, and I'm like, I was going to ask you a question too.
Okay, so then, we backpedaled, and so then the motion is to hold the public hearing, September 9 at 6:15?
6:30.
6:30? Okay. Are we clear on that? Thank you for raising that to our attention. Any other discussion? All in favor, I?
I.
Opposed? None? Okay, I carried. Okay. And police and fire wellness plans, and the chief is going to give us an update there, and you got a handout from him? Thank you. Sure.
Thank you. So what you guys have before you is something that's been in the works for quite some time. Can I give you a little backstory on how this came to be here this evening? As everyone knows, we had a fire that resulted in the death of a young lady here a couple weeks ago. At that time, I had two council members reach out to me as they were aware that this program was sitting here waiting for some type of action by the council. They asked me to send them the documents as they felt it was important to get this on the council's agenda, and they also asked to sit down and work with fire chief as they felt with what they see and the, the fire department sees within the scope of their job, that it was important that they as well had an opportunity to make sure that they're both physically fit, mentally fit, and just all around had good fitness, so that they can perform their jobs and perform it better for the, for the City of Panesville. At that point, we had sent them, sent the two council members off the information, and they had asked that this be put on tonight's agenda.
I have a question under, well, it, on each of, each of them, it says if the, you know, officer or firefighter is involved in a critical, critical incident, how is that defined?
What are you looking at?
I guess it's under, it's on page 47, mental health, and on this one, it says, it's the last paragraph, if a firefighter is involved in a critical incident, the firefighter may request additional services, et cetera. What's the definition of a critical incident?
So when you start looking at a critical incident, you're, you're going to be taking a situation like we had the other night, you know, with the, with the fire. Really, it's going to, you know, if you had, for us, if you were to have an officer involved shooting, those things that are just really out there, clearly the nature of them, you know, are going to have a significant impact. So let's say you had, you know, there was just recently a fire, head-on collision down by Rochester, where six people were trapped in their vehicles in a fire. You know, and ours had died. Those types of situations are going to be deemed a critical incident.
Shouldn't it be defined in the, somehow in the agreement if we're going to be spending, you know, funds or, you know, allowing time off or something? I guess that's, that's my, my biggest question.
We can have, you know, I'm speaking from the fire department's side of things, you can have an incident that may not come back to you for four or five years, and something will show up and cause a trigger. You know, this immediate issue or situation may not be the critical incident, but it might be the trigger or something that you experienced several years earlier or months earlier. So how do you really determine that? I don't know. It may be a good idea, I just don't have a direct answer for that either.
A question then also in regards to how it would apply to other departments. You know, we're concerned about physical safety at the front counter because of the, the possibilities of people there facing some potential critical incidents or having some triggers that might, you know, require some additional help or counseling or something.
What I would say to that is, I'm not in charge of the city hall, I'm not in charge of all the works, I don't know what, what those folks face. Ultimately, if the city believed that that was something that was important for all their staff, I would think that ultimately, you know, it'd be kind of on those department heads to either kind of adopt the model that we have. But while they deal with potentials, the fire department and the police department deal with reality. You know, we deal with things that actually happen, and we see those things, you know, on a consistent basis within our jobs. So I don't think this is something that shouldn't be looked at, or at least a component to this for the, the other areas. But I can tell you that there's nothing city hall or public works would experience or see that comes anywhere near what my staff and what Andy's staff had to deal with a couple of weeks ago.
And we just had a gas line break in a, on a street project, could be one of the public works individuals or, you know, there or, you know, witnessing someone, you know, we were kind of joking about where to, where to stand should it, should it blow up. So, you know, we can talk about potentialities and realities, but, you know, after it happens, it's a reality. How does it affect the unions?
What I have told the chief numerous times is this is a violation of our labor union agreements, and you will get served a grievance as soon as this is approved. I have also talked to the labor union attorneys, and they strongly advise that you table this this evening and let them scrub it due to the effects that you may get, because the other unions, the other units aren't getting anything, and you're giving benefits to volunteer firefighters that get paid per call, when you have part-time people that are getting no benefits at all. I did contact some other agencies on an employee assistant program to see price comparison. The gym membership is covered by our health insurance as long as you go four times a week.
A month?
No, I think it's four, a week. So if they're that interested in being at the gym, also the chief shared with me that not all the people are participating in the gym membership, but yet we're paying for them for these three months. This program that I talked to today, this employee assistant group, she would like to have a, have a webinar call with us, but for all 48 employees to be covered would be $2,500, and it's way more, way more options in this package than what's being presented this evening.
Okay, I'm not opposed to the concept, I just struggle with it not applying fairly to all, all departments.
So I'll say, I was one of the two council members that called Chief Wagner after this incident, and I said, what, what can the city council do to help? Because I listened to that 911 tape that got posted to YouTube, and I understand that was 10% of what was said on the radio that night. And, holy shit, you guys, you dealt with that? Thank you. Both departments, you did an excellent job.
Thank you.
I contacted Janelle Kendall of the county attorney's office, and Paul, she said, you did a fantastic job investigating, working that case. And I looked at this, and I said, we need something so that our fire, that our first responders know that our city appreciates them and knows that we're going to take care of them if something like this comes up. We have a staff of 25 volunteer firefighters who would save their, give their lives for us, and we struggle filling those spots sometimes, and I think this is something that could help fill those spots, show that we're thankful to them, and take care of them the way they need. If we lose an officer on a work comp call, we've got to, or because of PTSD, we've got to bring someone else in. It's going to cost the city a lot more money than what this is going to cost. And maybe this is, if there's a better program, maybe this can be temporary, but I think this is something that should have been implemented five, six years ago, but in light of recent events, we need to make sure that those who are out there are going to be taken care of. I agree with the question about what is a critical incident, but I think it's sort of like the definition of pornography. When you see it, you know it. We don't know what a critical incident is until we get one, and I would be in support of getting these types of benefits to all city employees, but in the meantime, we need to get something for our first responders, for those who are out there, for those who tried to rush into that trailer and couldn't do anything.
I'd like to say one thing. First of all, you can't make a decision based on one call. You got to realize the fire department has been doing this for 50 or 60 years, and had calls like that in the past. That being said, we got to watch the labor union and so forth. This doesn't bother me a bit. I'm kind of weird. One thing about this that I had questions about is all the, all the gym memberships at the school. Now, I realize that the chief has a contract with the school, but I also realize we have another company called Snap Fitness in Town, and as a city, they should at least have an option of bidding on it, because they're, either way you say it, they're paying taxes in this town. So we should play that game with at least the fire department, because I don't really think that's fair. And the other thing I had a question was is, and I don't know if this is a, if this would be an issue or not, but it was already brought up, do we ask the firemen if they want to participate in this before we pay it on a yearly basis, or do we just pay for everybody and hope they're going to do it? Is this a non-issue? When you start looking at a couple thousand dollars a year, I don't know that answer. I thought I'd bring it up today and see what everybody thought, because if you have 10 people doing it and 15 are not...
To, to answer a little bit of that, we have the same question. You know, that... You know, that, that's not something we have solved, you know, right now. I'm a hundred percent agree with you. I don't know if all of them want to participate in the physical fitness side of it. But, you know, I think that's all details that can be worked out. And as long as, you know, you brought up Snap Fitness, absolutely. Why wouldn't we, you know, offer that out there? I guess I'm okay with that. The only other issue is you have a public entity and another public entity. You know, do you really want to set, you know, put that little wedge in there, I guess, is the only other thought that we had brought up. So.
And, correct me if I'm wrong, the other potential problem with Snap is it's owned by a firefighter?
I believe his wife is him or owners. It's price, I believe. And. I don't see that being an issue. Mainly because it's still another entity in Painesville. Another person owns a small company in Painesville and therefore they should have at least, besides on the, the police force, they should have at least, we gotta give them the option to bid.
There are, there are ways of dealing with that.
I did an non-compete clause or a, I don't remember what it's called, Bill.
Conflict of interest.
Yeah.
It's, it's not really a conflict of interest. It's not like the fire department has a say in the decision here. You know, it's, so it's, it's not, it's not really a, an issue, I don't, that, as I, as I see it. It's a council decision. It's not a fire fighter or fire department decision. Fire department, the chief wants it. We don't even know if all the members want it and no individual members are getting to make this choice.
But I just think that we got to give everybody a shot if they want business in town. That's one thing.
I think that's fair.
I understand that this was initially meant to go before the labor negotiation. Can be, is it possible that we can send it there and we can look at the proposal that Renee has and we can check with Snap Fitness and just kind of answer some of these questions and then bring it back?
Can we get this all answered in like, by the next meeting?
I have a call in. Our main labor attorney was on vacation, but I've had two calls into her and the gentleman I was talking with last week, um, has all the documents and was going to speak to her today when she got in. So, um, yeah, my goal is to have everything addressed before, um, our next meeting.
I'll, I'll make the motion to table based on the uncertainties.
I will second that.
Any motion to table until we get the, uh, labor issues straightened out, is that correct, Neil?
Yes. And comparison and prices and whatever we can do.
Correct?
Can we table it till the next meeting?
Well, when we, when we know what these issues are.
Well.
Hopefully by next meeting.
If we don't have them done by the next meeting, we can table it again, but at least that gives us a deadline. Yeah.
Put it on the agenda.
And then we can get our meeting date set for the labor negotiation team.
Yeah. That's fine.
Understood?
So, we're taking this up next, next council meeting, it's back on the agenda?
Back on the agenda, next council meeting.
And then, chief, your guys are taken care of in that intervening time with whatever temporary stuff has been going on so far?
And, Chief Tony, can you figure out how old you can do, who's gonna and who's not gonna on the easiest way or maybe talk to Renee what the easiest way is? So, we don't pay for twenty-five if we do it on a yearly basis? Sign up by the first for the next year or?
Okay. I don't know how to assess this with everything.
I don't have a clue how to do it, but it doesn't make sense if only three people do it. I don't know.
And then, is there also a way to pay the bill to the?
They already proved it.
Yeah.
It's paid?
They were under the.
Okay. All right.
That's been taken care of.
Okay.
Okay, so we will live with and bring it to the, uh, it'll be on the next agenda, clear? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? None? That carried. All right. We'll do it, we'll do it right. And, okay, we have a personnel issue here and they're looking for a, um, motion to terminate the employment relationship with Rick Hansen, part-time public works maintenance effective August eighth, two thousand nineteen. He's still within his probationary period, correct?
That is correct.
I'll make the motion to terminate the employment relationship with Rick Hansen, part-time and public works maintenance effective August eighth, two thousand nineteen.
Second. Motion by LeBeau, seconded by Rinkie, to terminate the employment relationship with Rick Hansen, discussion? Yes, ma'am?
Was it, this was a seasonal?
No, part-time.
Part-time. Do we need to also start the hiring or post the job opening? Or are we not ready for that yet?
I guess I think that would be a good idea. Chances are by the time we, we hire a person, we'll only be working a month or so, but you never know. If we could find somebody, that would be great, yes.
We do have a motion to terminate. By doing that, you would have somebody ready to go in March when you need them.
Correct.
This year, we were behind the eight ball.
The, the, sorry, your honor. The, the, um, discussion that Ron and I had had is, um, if it's going to be October before we hire them, then we bring them on and then they're laid off for four or five months. So, then he's going to pay, his department will pay unemployment on something that may have only worked two or three weeks. Till they get called back in April or March.
Otherwise, the only other thing if we can, we need somebody by, uh, fifteenth of March is what you're looking at, basically.
Your, your intention for this person to not be to work at all in the wintertime? There's no?
Correct, they would not work at all.
Okay. Oh, right now, we have a motion to terminate. We can either vote that one, uh, up or down or it can be amended. Hey, since we'll vote on this one, the motion is to terminate, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? None? That carried.
So, is that, am I understanding correctly, you're not interested in starting the hiring process until like, after the first of the year? Because you don't want to pay unemployment through the winter?
If you only hire them for three or four weeks, your unemployment's going to be so nil, it won't even go out and affect. It's only going to be, depending on who the guy is, it probably won't even affect your unemployment rate.
We don't have an unemployment rate. We pay a hundred percent. We don't pay it. We don't make deposits. We just pay a hundred percent of their employment, unemployment.
They would only be eligible for a small amount, is what you're saying?
Right.
They only work three or four weeks.
It's going to be just a tiny, tiny little bit. It's not going to be thousands of dollars or anything because he hasn't worked long enough. He could tag back to his other company and work. That's what I'm saying.
I'll make the motion to start the hiring process to fill the part-time public works maintenance position.
I'll second. Motion by LeBeau, seconded by Rinkie, to begin the hiring process for a, uh, part-time public works maintenance employee, discussion?
And I have, is this the sixty-seven day or the?
No, this is.
Full, full-time or what?
It's the one that goes from March to November.
Right, it's the, no, at one time it was called part-time, full-time.
No, it's just part-time. Yeah.
The other one is?
But it's not the sixty-seven, it's, okay.
But it, but it pays ten dollars an hour, so finding someone is going to be a challenge. This gentleman was the only one that showed up for interviews and it was posted for a couple of months. But we'll throw the fishing line out there and see what we can really, that's why we have six months to fill there.
If we vote, yes. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? None? Yep, okay, yes. All right, okay. Old Business Investment Advisor, this is coming back from previous meeting and we'll get another update from Renee.
Um, I did meet with, uh, Jeremy and Kayla from Managed Assets. They, uh, we had a, an hour and a half meeting. We set up some parameters onto how to communicate. I did invest, uh, some money that had been cashed in because I was having no communications. Then I didn't have any, it was set up that every Monday, uh, Jeremy will send me what investments are available via email. There's been one week where I didn't get anything. Today, I did get something. So, I changed the motion, um, so that, um, we can invest with either or, uh, RBC or managed assets. We, it, we're not required to only have one. We can have two investment advisors. It would give you a, a backup in case managed assets, something falls through the seams again. I can keep doing investments. I could invest with Richard as long as both sides know what we have. We can use them both. And then I could bring whatever happens to the council at the next meeting.
Has something actually fallen through the seams?
Well, it was.
Again, so that's what I was wondering.
It was originally transferred to Managed Assets in October. I had one communication with them because the CD became mature. Then I didn't hear from them again until December because we had another CD that came due. And since December, I've had no communications until the end of July when it came to council to remove them as our investment manager. I have heard from Rich Knowlton with RBC every week since we've taken our account. He has called me regarding investments or what the markets are doing and we have nothing with him.
The motion you, the way you have it stated, you could go with.
Either one.
Who offers you a better deal?
Well, they should both have the same.
Should be the same.
Yeah, they should both have the same deal.
Okay.
Yes.
But it does give you an option. And maybe that's a good thing to be outright now.
And I, and I did, was very honest with Jeremy and said, three strikes, you're out. We've had this conversation twice. The next time. So. So far, so good.
Can I make a motion to authorize the city administrator to invest with either managed asset group, Painesville, Zetara, or RBC Wealth Management with Richard Knowlton as investment advisors? And authorize a mayor and a city administrator to sign all necessary documents?
Second. Motion by Gilmore, seconded by Hertzberg, as on the action sheet on page fifty-five, to, uh, authorize the administrator to invest with either. Discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? None? That carried. All right, and, and coming back again, the purchase of tablets and, or laptops for council on page fifty-six. Renee's been doing some more research. Everybody checked in, let you know what they wanted?
You're, yep, absolutely, your honor. As on the action sheet on our administrator comments, um, Neil, Sean, and Alicia would like the Microsoft Surface and Len and Renee, I have to replace this, one would be the Dell laptop and you had mentioned that you would be using your own.
Well, I'll make the motion to purchase three of the Microsoft Surface Pro tablets and two of the Dell laptops for those council members as stated here.
I'll second. Motion by LeBeau, seconded by Rinkie, to purchase three of the Microsoft Surface Pro, six tablets and two of the Dell laptop, Vostros. Four, were you running a calculator there? Well, the total would be the three and the three times and the two times.
Yep.
For those council members who like to use one during their term in office, is that clear?
Renee, just to confirm, um, that quote from Microsoft with the lower rate should still be active, right? That would be the prices that we're looking at, not the higher one? Looking at page, where did it go?
The one thousand seven seventy-eight ninety-eight?
No, um, page seventy-one of the agenda. Then the last time you said that you'd called Microsoft and they were able to give you, I don't remember if it was like an eight percent discount or something like that, but it was a little bit cheaper going straight through them. And it looks like you've got four of them priced on there, but we only need three. I guess it's a.
Yeah, so it would go with, with that one as long as it's got everything that you needed, yes.
Okay.
I would try to get them at that price.
Okay, thanks.
See? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? None? That carried. And, okay, and the two thousand nineteen street and drainage project, page seventy-two.
Yes, just, excuse me, just to give a quick update on the project, uh, they continue to make progress. The paving along Hudson Street and Belmont Street were completed last week, so the work along those streets are nearing completion. Uh, they still, still have to do some seeding along Belmont. Uh, they currently are continuing to work on the underground utilities down along Maple. Uh, the sanitary sewer's been installed and now they're working on the water mains. So, they will continue to work on the utility improvements down in that area for the next several weeks and followed by the, uh, street improvement, so. In your packet is a copy of pay request two for the project, uh, for the work that was completed during the month of July and it amounts to three hundred and thirty thousand, one hundred and eighty-nine dollars and seventy-five cents.
Seventy-four cents. I'm tickled.
Seventy-four cents?
Seventy-four cents.
All right, penny saved, penny earned.
I'll, I'll make the motion to approve payment estimate number two in the amount of three hundred and thirty thousand, one hundred and eighty-nine dollars and seventy-four cents payable to Voss Plumbing and Heating Incorporated.
I'll second that.
Motion by Hertzberg, seconded by LeBeau, to approve payment estimate number two in the amount of three hundred and thirty thousand, one hundred and eighty-nine dollars and seventy-four cents payable to Voss Plumbing and Heating, Inc., discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? None? That carried. Anything else on the, that project? If not, we'll move on to the MPI expansion project on page seventy-eight.
Yeah, the contractor has started the construction of the MPI expansion project. To date, they've, their work's been out at the pre-treatment, new pre-treatment facility out by the wastewater treatment facility. So, you really haven't seen any work around town, it's all been out in that area. Uh, they've done some relocation, they're starting to, uh, uh, plan to be putting in the new footings for the new building here and, uh, starting this week, so. As with the other project, their, the work completed in July, there's a pay request number one in the packet to Eagle Construction in the amount eighty-six thousand, eight hundred and sixty-five dollars and fifty-eight cents.
I'll make the motion to approve payment estimate number one in the amount of eighty-six thousand, eight hundred and sixty-five dollars, fifty-eight cents payable to Eagle Construction Company Incorporated.
Second. Did I hear a second from John down here? Okay. He jumped the gun on you there, Neil, so, uh, a motion by LeBeau, seconded by Rinkie, to approve payment estimate number one in the amount of eighty-six thousand, eight hundred and sixty-five dollars and fifty-eight cents payable to Eagle Construction Company, Inc., discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? None? That carried.
In addition, in their packet is also a copy of our, uh, grant agreement for that project. As a council may recall, uh, the city received just over one point nine million dollars in grant funds through the bit, uh, business development, public infrastructure grant program for that project. So, there's a standard agreement. There's very little that they allow you to change in these agreements. Most of it is shown in red that you're allowed to change. Uh, we did review it and, and make some comments to, uh, Deed on it and they did a couple modifications on some of the, as far as scheduling concepts in there and different things. But like I said, there's several things in the agreement that really don't even apply to our project, but they, they will not take them out. They just leave them in there even if they don't apply.
Okay.
I'll make the motion to approve the encumbered grant agreement for the MPI expansion wastewater system improvements from Deed.
Second.
Motion by Hertzberg, seconded by LeBeau, to approve the encumbered grant agreement for the MPI expansion wastewater system improvements from Deed, discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? None? That carried. And informational, and we have the, uh, two thousand nineteen, all those reports that are available. The investment in the liquor reports, equal financial reports, capital improvement breakout, all those. Everything's available on the city website, right, just about? And the liquor store reports on the, on the. And the liquor store reports on the, on the last, towards the end there, and we're done, we're adjourned. Thank you all.